Special meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for March 19th, 2012. So would the recorder please call the roll?
Board member Bennett?
Here.
Board member Tesler?
President.
Board member Nanki?
Here.
Board member Claussen?
Here.
Board member Dickey?
Here.
Board member Thomas?
Here.
Board member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have an agenda to approve. Member Bennett, would you please make a motion for that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency for March 19th.
Second.
It's been moved by member Bennett and seconded by member Tesler to approve the agenda for this special meeting this evening. Yes, councillor Nanki, member Nanki?
Um, never mind. We're in urban renewal.
All right, yes we are. All right.
Chicken.
So I'm board member A.
Yes, you are board member Nanki, that's true. Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have two action items. Member Bennett, would you like to discuss those, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move action item, staff recommendation on action item 4A.
Second.
It's been moved by member Bennett and seconded by member Nanki to move the staff recommendation on item 4A. Is there any discussion?
We don't have public comment.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Okay, just if we had anybody for public comment.
Oh, no, we don't. We don't. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the next one, member Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation on action item 4B.
Second.
It's been moved by member Bennett and seconded by member Tesler to move the staff recommendation on item 4B. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. There's no further business to come before the agency and we will adjourn that meeting. We want... All right. Okay, all right. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Councillor Bennett?
Here.
Councillor Tesler?
President.
Councillor Nanki?
Here.
Councillor Claussen?
Here.
Councillor Dickey?
Here.
Councillor Thomas?
Here.
Councillor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. Councillor Bennett, will you please address the special meeting agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Salem City Council for March 19th.
It's been moved by councillor Bennett and seconded by councillor Nanki to move the, adopt the agenda for the special meeting for this evening, March 19th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And councillor Bennett, will you please discuss the approval of additions and deletions to the agenda, the yellow sheet that everyone has?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move approval of additions, this is addition of council, of action item 3.3F to the special meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Bennett and seconded by councillor Tesler to adopt the additions to the council item, to the council agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. And public comment today? Oh, I'm sorry, we do have time for councillor comment. Do we have any comment from our councillors? Councillor Tesler?
Thank you, this was real fast. I got to have the honor of being you again on the weekend. I'm you on the weekend a lot, which is okay. So, I'm not as cool as you, but anyway. I got to hand out the Mayor's Art Award for Excellence at the...
Oh, thank you.
...kids art show at Bush Barn and it was really fun and a lot of parents came and, you know, it's always nice when you have those things because the little kids have the clay that looks like, well, looks like whatever they think it looks like and then, you know, there's lots of other good stuff. But the young person who won the award was Ms. Amy Mannion and it was a really interesting sort of pen and ink drawing.
Yes.
And I got to hand out the check for $50 and she put her big ribbon on there and she was very happy and I have a picture, I'll email you too.
Oh, good.
Anyway, I got to do that.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. I had a family event out of town that had been on the calendar for a while, but I thought that particular piece of art was extremely creative and I still hope to meet the artist. It was really well done. Thanks for covering for me too, appreciate that. Councillor Clem?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Just want to remind everybody that this coming Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 27th, at downtown First Baptist Church, starting in the morning and running most of the day, is the Homeless Connect Day at First Baptist. We've, the group that has put this together has done it for the last four years and now what's happened is other communities are emulating it and actually getting some help to folks in their communities. Dallas held it two months ago, month and a half ago, had 350 people of which some came from Salem, so there's a lot of needy folks out there and the neat thing about the Homeless Connect is they've got the dental bands there, they've got bike repair, they've got health screenings, veterans assistance, just tons and tons of clothing and food. So if there's anybody out there listening that wants to help in some small way, they need volunteers badly, show up at 8:00 in the morning, they'll give you a shirt and a real purpose in your life for that day and I will tell you at the end of the day you will feel like a different person and you'll get a chance to have really helped out some people that really are in need with food, clothing, mental care, dental care and believe it or not, a fourth of the people attending are children. So this is an important event for Salem and it's an important event to show that we are really the city of peace. So I would encourage if you'd like to either donate or donate your time, both would be very much appreciated in Salem First Baptist and it starts 8:00 in the morning, it'll run all day. So anybody out there know how to repair bikes, anybody out there have any extra clothing or veterinary supplies for pets, because all kinds of folks have pets and needs of any kind, so be invited to come down and/or help the community action agency with the Homeless Connect event on 27th of March.
And the Salem First Baptist Church is where?
Downtown, I think it's Marion and Liberty.
Corner of Marion and...
I'm saying Marion and Liberty.
I think it is Liberty, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah, just one block west of Marion Parkade, so...
Okay, good.
Yeah, if you can come on down, get there early, we'll put you to work.
Wonderful, thanks for telling us about that. I have an item and you see it down here in front of me, actually. This is our submission, our contribution to a special project that Marion County Commissioner Sam Brentano was here to speak to us about a few weeks ago and this is our submission, it represents the City of Salem. You see some, some of the images on here that are particularly near and dear to us, the state Capitol, the Union Street Railroad Bridge, festivals in the park and this will hang in the courthouse, the Marion County Courthouse, as one of the, I believe it's 22 cities that will have representations now in the county courthouse. So thank you to the staff that actually put this together for us.
Yes, Peter Fernandez led that group up.
All right. Thank you, nicely done. Okay, now we will move to public comment and we do have two people who've signed up. We have Barbara Palermo and Ross Sutherland, is that right? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Palermo and I still live in Ward 8. I'll be very, very brief tonight. The chicken licensing fee and the modified regulations that your staff is recommending are very reasonable and I appreciate the work that you all did to make this happen. If you finalize these changes tonight, I'm certain that you will see a huge increase in the number of chicken owners who get their permits and become legal in the coming months. And I will continue to do everything I can to educate people and make sure that the number of complaints remains at a low, a very low number. I've made nearly 20 appearances at this very podium and I'm very excited that this could be my last one, so please pass the changes as outlined in the staff report and consider coming to our Chicken Coop Tour on July 21st so you can see firsthand why so many people are passionate about backyard chickens and why we were so determined to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right, thanks for coming down this evening. Ross Sutherland, am I saying that correctly? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Ross Sutherland, I'm the part-time director of the Bush House Museum, a program of the Salem Art Association and I'm here this evening to encourage you to support the admission rate change that will be presented a little bit later in the evening. So as you know, the Salem Art Association is the, has the art fair, the Clay Ball, the community arts education that provides art to over 11,000 schoolchildren in Marion, Polk and Yam Hill Counties and also oversees the Bush House Museum, which is in Bush's pasture park, so thank you.
Thank you. Were there questions for Ross?
Thank you.
There is a question, councillor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thanks for coming down.
Sure.
Looking at, you know, $4 versus $6 and something people choose to go pay to do...
Sure.
Do you expect to see, because it's a 50% increase, the supply and demand shift to where you actually don't get quite as many people?
No, I think what we're looking at is that we're looking at charging a reasonable rate for people that are coming from out of town. I mean, we still do four free open houses per year and we do a lot of complimentary tours. We just had a group of people transitioning from prison to outside of prison that came to a tour on Wednesday and we, we still do that. So what we're looking at is, is bringing our rates up to be in line with what, what we're offering and, and the changes that have been made over the last 10 years, so...
And one other, if I could. We, we moved around senior and students?
Yes.
And is that what the typical lineup is or how did we come about?
What we did is we moved from 55 for a senior to 62 and part of that was because that, as you know, I mean, having seniors at 55 is...
I'm almost there.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, because of the change in the longevity, people at 55 are certainly not, I mean, are not seniors per se, that was a little bit... And then the other thing is, is we made, we made a smaller incremental change for children and youth.
Yeah, there was a children student.
We changed that up because, forgive me, we looked at the idea that there was, we had, that we were, we considered driving age to be sort of the time when, when youth would be more able to pay a rate, an increased rate. It was all sort of before, I think it was, we had these rates that were like, you know, like 12 to 21 or something, it was a little bit...
Yeah, where are you a youth compared to when are you a student?
Yeah, it was a little bit awkward, so that, that was our...
But it's nice then, because a student, it was just 16 plus, so I could be in school and still get the student rate, correct? As long as I show my ID card.
Yes, if you show your ID and that was the other thing is, is that students could be college students, university students and that. And the other thing about that is the admission rates are something that if we have, like, say if we have a group of seniors that come and several of them are under 62, we usually say, well, we'll just give you all the senior rate. I mean, it's not, not a hard line kind of thing and we've...
So if I just look old, I can get it just...
If you look old, yeah. We've had people that call up and say that we'd like to, we'd like to bring somebody and they said, would you, you know, will you charge the caregivers? And we say, no, you know, we'll just give one, one charge and then that. So it's a very friendly change in the admission rates.
Thanks much.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming down to talk to us about that. All right, the next item on our calendar is actually the consent calendar. Councillor Bennett, would you like to make a motion or do you have polls to discuss?
I do, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following poll. 3.3E by councillor Clem and then councillor Dickey is recusing herself on 3.3F. And councillor Nanki will recuse himself on 3.2B.
Which one was that, please?
Chickens.
No, no, that's, no.
3.2B.
No, that's A.
Oh, thank you.
Looks like 8.2A is chickens.
8.2A.
And that's councillor Nanki?
Yeah, I think...
His favorite enhancement of his business regarding chicken licensing.
Yes, I see, I get it, all right, thank you. Okay, all right. Then will you make a motion? Did you just move the motion? Was there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Bennett and seconded by councillor Tesler to adopt the consent calendar with the items 3.2B, which is being, which councillor Nanki is recusing himself from, count, item 3.3E, which is polled by councillor Clem, and 3.3F that councillor Dickey is recusing herself from. All right. Any further discussion about those items? All right, to move the adoption of the consent calendar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, now to public hearing, we have none this evening, so we'll go to, oh, I'm sorry. Right, but we don't have a public hearing, so we go to this one, right?
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Is that right? Okay. All right, special orders of business, which will be the items that were polled. Councillor Bennett, would you like to introduce any of those?
Madam Mayor, councillor Clem polled 3.3E, so he'll have a motion for you.
All right, councillor Clem, would you like to speak to that item?
Yes, thank you. Get the discussion going up. I'll move staff recommendation for 3.3E, Salem Airport Staffing.
Second. It's been moved by councillor Clem and seconded by councillor Thomas to move for the staff recommendation on item E. Is there discussion? Councillor Clem?
Yes, I pulled this item because I'm very concerned about what we're doing in terms of budget and what, and how we're communicating with the public about how we're adjusting services here in Salem. And I think, I did want to ask a couple of questions if I could. A first one, if I might, would be for Director Wales. This is under your jurisdiction right now.
That's correct.
If that's okay, Madam Mayor, to ask questions?
Yes, certainly, go ahead.
Okay. John, what, if this position is currently being done by employees now, I mean, really, we're talking about, it's an analyst position to make sure we're in compliance with the FAA, the federal government and Aviation Administration and so it's essentially being done by employees now, is that correct?
It's being done by a variety of employees there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are these overtime hours or are these managers who are just expected to work extra?
Both, both. But majority of the work is being done by the operations manager and by the airport manager.
Okay.
With overtime.
So they are not receiving overtime?
No.
Okay. So the idea is that one full person needs to come in and do what these two managers essentially are carrying the brunt of?
And, and some of the, the maintenance overseeing, oversight of the maintenance operations as well.
Okay.
So it's, it's a blend of almost every position that's out there.
Okay, and so they're all doing analysis work?
No, no, there's, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but Mr. Wales, could you speak up right into the microphone?
Sure.
We can't hear you over here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So maintenance folks and managers are doing analysis work and tracking of FAA grants?
No, well, there, there's a lot of compliance, code compliance. What, what people may not understand is that the airport is open seven days a week, it's open 24 hours a day. There are requirements that are placed on the airport that, and I know you're familiar with this, as far as requirements to keep our certification for our Part 139 and, and in order to, to keep up to date on our reporting and management of, of, of ongoing tasks. What's happening is that the staff that's out there, in order to keep up with this, and, and I should mention that the, the certification that we have at the airport, the Part 139 certification, is a higher standard that, that a general aviation airport would have to meet. And so there are different, a higher level of expectation and responsibilities and there are a lot of documents, safety, wildlife, security, training, of a variety of manuals that need to be updated on, on a fairly regular base and basis. And what we're seeing is, and I've seen this since urban development took this over two years ago, that our staff is having to put in long hours into the evening and into, onto many weekends in order just to keep up with this. And it's certainly is sustainable or has not been, for the short term it's sustainable, but for the long term, I'm seeing a lot of burnout, I'm seeing staff in there almost every weekend, almost every night there being, being late, in addition to the other, other services. So this is just keeping up with the work that is already there and it's been going on for years and I'm concerned about it.
Are we in danger of losing our Part 139 certification?
Well, I, I think if we don't address, I, I think we can do better with our Part 139 certification. I don't think we're in danger of, of losing it, but I think if we don't keep our, you know, I think every time, every year the FAA comes in and finds any deficiency is, is a deficiency and we need to make sure that we're running our airport in complete compliance and in a, in a manner that's expected and shouldn't be relying on the FAA to tell us if we're not in compliance or not. And so I have those concerns. I think we've, we've met our certification inspections every year that, that I'm aware of, but we've got a, a staff that is, I think, tired.
And so do we have a list of deficiencies now that we're not able to catch up with in terms of the last Part 139 inspection?
We had, we had, we got a list of deficiencies, but we've, I believe, and I can ask John to speak to that, but I think we, we've caught up with them.
And do you believe that the workload will change with the master plan now approved and projects that may come up in the future?
If, if that happens, I think the workload will increase, clearly will increase out there, but this is to keep, keep pace with where we are right now.
And I just want to clarify if I could for a second, Madam Mayor, the, the funding stream to pay for this, is this coming out of general fund? Specifically, where's the money coming from? If it's coming from another city department, is that coming out of general fund?
Now, the funding for this position is out of airport revenues. It's coming predominantly from the leases of buildings and land at the airport. That, that revenue stream is restricted, that money can only be used on the airport, it cannot be used for other city programs. The FAA has restrictions about commingling funding and that money that we raise there is only for airport services. There's no general fund that will be going to this position and the airport's not expecting to receive, to receive any, any subsidy on that.
And what is the downturn if council does not approve this request? What's, what's the impact?
The message to our employees out there is that they'll be working, continuing to work very long hours with no end in sight. I think that's the simplest answer.
Linda, I'm trying to understand that we've potentially laying off employees.
Right.
We've certainly given some employees notice and, and while this is an airport position, really not trying to belabor the city budget tonight, but you and I had a, a discussion about all the things that can be done to keep employees working, because we're just adding to the number of unemployed when we, when we make changes to the city budget. Help me understand that any of the employees being laid off could potentially apply for or, or how do we handle folks as far as being potentially hired for positions like this? If we're losing somewhere else, are we, are we helping keep services up for the public and keeping people employed?
Right.
By, by essentially shifting them?
We try to and I've asked Ms. Manell, our HR director, to come and talk about this in more detail because I think it's important information for the council and the community to understand. Our commitment is to try to, when employees receive layoff notices, to try, we help them find another job here or at the city, as long as there's ones come up that they're qualified for and they compete successfully, or we try to find them positions, you know, do what we can to help them be ready to find positions in other organizations. And Ms. Manell is ready to talk about maybe the full scope of what we do to help people.
Good evening, Connie Manell, HR director. And yes, the very first thing we do, we sit down with each and every employer, we attempt to, and assess their skill levels and their backgrounds. Then any position that comes open regardless of what department it is, we assess first of all, if there's any employees on the layoff list which were contractually obligated to do so, is, are, is qualified for that job. What we have been doing, with the exception of our police and entry, police and fire, is having internal only examinations. This particular position is a little bit more technical, but we do, and most of our, our actual lists that we establish are internal motion, but the first choice and our first obligation is to the employee and we have been very successful in terms of assisting those laid off or potentially laid off employees to, to get other employment as well.
Any idea how many people are being laid off, will be able to, you know, find places? I understand one, one of our officers was essentially hired someplace, so help me understand that.
I'm, I'm sorry, councillor, one of our off...
Of the, well, one of the, the police officer who ended up leaving the organization was hired at another police department.
That's correct, by another agency.
So if we can't hire them, the issue is to...
Yes, if we can't, we let other agencies know of the people that we have who are available for other work. In that case, the police chief talked to other police chiefs about the fact that we were going to have someone who would be laid off and, and he was picked up by another agency. We've had other employees go on to other positions in other agencies as well as, you know, to the extent that we can, we like to keep them within the city in another fund or other positions that come open, but that's not always possible. So the HR department has a program where we help people write resumes, help them with interviewing skills, give them material about what other postings and jobs are available in other organizations. in other organizations. So we have a fairly comprehensive program.
Do we have any kind of a feel for the employees that are being laid off, if they'll be able to be rehired in other positions? I mean, we know what their qualifications are.
At the present time, we're doing a complete assessment. It really depends upon who's hired for which particular job. One of the things we do too is we work with other agencies, and we're in constant contact with other agencies within the immediate area as well. But we do try and assist them in their placing, and we actually sit down and do the resume building, and we actually well-say star employees in filling out applications. But as far as what's coming up in terms of availability, we know we have some retirements coming up July 1st, we know we have another promotion, and we're hoping that we can place some of those laid off employees in vacant positions.
And I just had one last one. It says here in the staff report that the revenue for the airport position is coming because now the city's Public Works Department is now paying for land that it's using out at the airport. Could somebody help me understand that that is general fund or water and sewer fund? Where is the money coming from specifically? Not just Public Works, but where does it come from before it goes to Public Works?
Mayor, Counselor Peter Fernandez, interim deputy city manager, it's utility money, it's water and sewer money, and it's coming from when we do vector sweepings from, you know, from cleaning catch basins and the like, we deposit a lot of that in airport lands. So we're using some of the airport lands as landfill. Later on, we're moving across the street to a much more robust situation there, and we have to pay rent for that. So for a number of years, we helped the airport out by filling a pond that was out there, but once the pond was filled, then we needed to start paying for the use of that land, and that's where that money's coming from.
Okay, so water and sewer utility bills are paying substantially most of this or all of this position?
Well, we're paying for the use of the airport land, and then?
Then that's being used.
The council is deciding how to allocate that money otherwise.
Yeah, I apologize to my fellow council members, but you know, this stuff doesn't come out unless we talk about it. This money is coming indirectly from water and sewer fund, it's not general fund. And so I just want to make sure that the public understands, while people are being laid off, efforts are being taken to keep them employed, but really, we're adding this position because it sounds like Public Works for the first time in years is paying for landfill services that it uses for water and sewer. Is that a fairly accurate sort of summary?
Yes. It's, we, once the pond was filled, and then they need to pay for the use of the land, and so that is additional revenue that's coming into the airport fund. And then this position is paid totally out of the airport fund. It's not dollar to dollar from water and sewer to this position.
I understand.
But it's the full revenue in the airport fund.
And it can't be used to help the general, city's general fund in any way?
No, you could not use that money to support parks or security or other areas, it has to be used for airport-related expenses.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
I want to clarify this, if I may, because I think a linkage has been made to the water and sewer fund that does not exist. My understanding is the Public Works rents space for whatever their purposes are at the airport.
That's right.
People who have hangers rent space for whatever they're doing with those hangers, and other fees are collected at the airport, and this all goes into a pot, and to try to create a linkage between that water and sewer fund dollar and this position, I think is a mistake.
Right.
If that's what's going on, I want to understand that. If water and sewer is paying for this position?
No.
That better be very, very clearly stated in the budget.
Yeah, that's why I was saying that the airport has revenue that comes in from a number of places. Out of that airport revenue, all of the airport expenses are paid, so it's not possible to link what dollar is going to, what use, it's airport revenue is used to support these activities.
So any linkage with the water and sewer fund really doesn't exist? Or does?
No, except that that additional revenue is revenue that we didn't have before, and so now from the overall revenue at the airport, so we have other revenue sources that are coming in too, the point is that now we can afford to have this position, and we need it and have needed it for some time, but there's not a link between one source of revenue and, yeah.
Okay, I have other questioners lined up here. We have Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki, and then we'll go back to Counselor Clem.
Sort of further elaborate on Counselor Bennett's piece there, too. The linkage isn't there because at the same time, Public Works, if they were renting private property, would be paying the same fee. It's not a sweetheart deal here to fund this position. We got to be clear about that, because it's not.
I appreciate the question, Counselor. In fact, it would be more. The opportunity that we have at the airport is substantially less expensive for us to use that site than to transfer it to either the Marion County landfill or landfills in other parts of the state. Not just the tipping fees more expensive, but the transit costs to deliver that would be more expensive. So this is actually a benefit. This is an expense that the utility would have to incur regardless, it's just we're getting a very reasonable, it's a market rate, but it's a very reasonable market rate compared to what we would have to do otherwise.
Okay, Counselor Nanki.
The questions just keep popping through. First ended to deal with kind of Counselor Bennett's issue. It's no different than what we see in the Budget Committee. We have funds paying general fund, and general fund paying other funds, depending on where the services are flowing. So technically, you could say water and sewer funds are paying for the city attorney to review anything that has to do with water and sewer. In the case of the debris that's being located on the airport property, we were filling up a pond, which means we somehow have all the analytical on that material to prove that it's not hazardous. Why, there's no one else in the city that needs clean fill? And why could we not actually get rid of it for free? Because people are asking for that.
Because it's not clean fill.
But we have a, I'm assuming a letter from DEQ saying it's okay to land deposit?
It is material that is not considered a hazardous waste, but it is not considered clean fill either. So it lives in an in-between, to layman's term, it lives in an in-between world. We couldn't offer it as material that other people could use.
But we can dump it on our own property?
Correct.
So the odds that we could dump it on someone else's property are greatly reduced then?
Well, if somebody wanted it, typically people charge for that, for that privilege.
Okay. And then finally, in regards to the position itself, when we were talking previously, we're paying overtime for people to come in and nights and weekends. Would this position then be structured so that it's not a standard work week to where then we have to pay this person overtime to come in on a night and the weekends? Will it cross the weekend somehow? Or how will that be configured? Or are we going to pay overtime?
Let me ask John Pascal, who's going to be the airport manager to address that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. For the record, I'm John Pascal, the Airport Administrator. My first initial thought was exactly that, would be to stagger my staff so that we would have seven-day-a-week coverage. It would still likely only be regular business hours, more or less. Obviously, we can't be there 24 hours a day, but I would like to have coverage over a Saturday and a Sunday, which wouldn't relieve us of the responsibility of coming in after hours for on-call type things. But whether this position covers both Saturday and Sunday, I haven't, you know, I haven't worked out the actual schedule yet, and maybe that person covers the Saturday and another person covers the Sunday, so that everybody has, you know, one weekend day off. So there will be some consideration given to that.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to point out to those councilors that are concerned about linkage to take a look at the paragraph just before the facts and findings, where it says, "The position will be funded through increased revenue primarily due to the payment of the parcels. The new revenue is expected to continue for a minimum of five years and will fund this position." So hence, I don't mean to deliberate and to establish linkages that aren't there, but I think, I'm reading the staff report as it's written, I don't see anything about lease revenue. And so I want to make sure we aren't guilty of not being completely forthright about where the revenues are coming. It doesn't mention anything about lease payments. So I appreciate the clarification point and the answers. So I best understand, and this is the question I want you to confirm, is that the revenue paying for this position does not come from the general fund, it comes from a combination of sources, including lease payments and payments from Public Works, regardless of where they come from? Because that is not clear in the staff report.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Further questions? All right, we're ready for the question. All those in favor of adopting the staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Information reports. Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I believe Counselor Clausen has a motion for you.
All right. Thank you.
If I may, I would move that we pull the administrative decision described in Information Report 7B for a council, a public hearing as scheduled by staff, I believe is the way I should say that. Am I correct?
Correct. It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Tesler to pull, to refer the planning administrator decision, item 7B, to a public hearing. All right, is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Clausen?
I think this is out in my ward, and it's something that this developer and this family came in and talked to the Neighborhood Association about, and they have a legitimate plan and concern that they're putting forward, but it definitely speaks to our policy of connectivity with our roads and neighborhoods and in discussion with Counselor Bennett and staff. It's just probably a good conversation for us to have and see what everybody thinks and make sure we're all on the same page. So should be reasonably quick, I think, but it'll be a good conversation.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. We're ready for the question? We do vote on that, don't we, for a public hearing? All those in favor of pulling that item and setting it for a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There were two other items, actually three items, three other items on the information reports. Were there any questions about any of those items? All right. We have no first readings of ordinances, we have a second reading. Would the recorder please read the ordinance? Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 812 relating to the keeping of chickens, amending SRC 50.710. Counselor Nanki.
I need to recuse based on a potential financial impact.
Okay. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
All right. We have public comment next, and we do have an individual who has signed up. Gary Steiner has signed up for public comment, agenda item nine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilors, City Staff.
Good evening. And if you'll give your name and address.
My name is?
You have three minutes, and the amber light comes on at the end of two, and when the red light comes on, your three minutes are up. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gary Steiner. I'm currently a city employee for the City of Salem Parking Services Division, formerly Parking and Security Division. I'm here tonight just to draw the attention to what was a surprise for our division when we received notice that after the multiple city council hearings, or actually public hearings, on the current budget throughout the City of Salem, we received notice that despite the fact that we weren't going to have our officers laid off, that now we are going to have laid off. Director John Wells brought that to our attention here recently, and we want to make it a concern out to the City of Salem, because I'm thinking that laying these officers, security officers, off is in detriment to the City of Salem. I believe that we've had eight officers, now we have four officers, and now we're going to, in an effort to be able to provide more police officers, use those dollars from our division over to provide more police officers. Our concern is that we, the four officers that's being laid off June 30th, while they have been receiving some help from our HR, still there's a concern that the city is not going to be able to maintain the level of proficiency and integrity and security in the city facilities that they're currently professionally providing. These are officers that've gone through training, they've been here with it multiple years, and these are officers that have the city's best interests at heart, that do far beyond what the normal typical quote-unquote "security" personnel do. It's easy to stereotype our officers as security officers as security guards, but in reality, they're observing, report more than just a stationary session, they're required to go out to all the facilities from Marion Park Gate, Chmecha Park Gate, Riverfront, Library, City Hall, and respond to areas that often police officers don't have time to allocate their resources to. When we have our officers going, should the city go ahead with their proposal with transferring those funds over to the Police Department, we're going to be without officers to cover that gap. It's a concern of mine that the cities and the businesses in the downtown, as well as our employees here at the City Hall, would distinctly have a disadvantage in not having them there. That's basically all I have at this particular point in time.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Steiner, the police officers respond to calls. You folks prevent them? Any idea what kinds of crimes and what kinds of incidents that your presence has on people shopping and people willing to use the parking structures?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I have a staff representative for the city from our local council, 75, who has a report indicating just what kind of reports that our officers fill out, where they go on to. Some of them are on local on structure, but others have to deal with observations of containment of people who have been refused to, who have been charged with trespass in the City of Salem. They deal with first aid, observant, they call, activate the EMS system, and they provide security to the employees at night when they go out to their cars, things of this nature. They provide on bike patrol, as well as motorized officers. They also assist us in parking with our downtown parking district, because they're there. They're the eyes and ears of the City of Salem, and they help our programs facilitate very effectively. We work really well with them, and they provide a backup in case I myself have to go out and boot a car or something like that. They're there in public works projects even. They have come alongside and made sure that everything was on the up and up in order so that the paving project was going on this past summer. And we look forward, you know, to doing more projects of that nature, and their assistance have been helpful as we try to contact members, our citizens, whose vehicles are on the street when they've been parking in a parking zone past a limited time.
Is there any chance we can get our hands on, get copies of what all that report looks like at some later time?
With us tonight is Justin St. James, and he's our council representative. He has the report with those showing the number of incidences and showing those kinds on city facilities as well as non-city facilities.
I think probably the best way to deal with that would be to actually have that provided to the city manager, and she can distribute that to city council members.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Ms. Steiner, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming down and alerting us to sort of the background of issues related to these employees. I want to just check with the city manager to clarify just a couple of things.
Sure.
The hearings on, this is based on a city manager's budget, which is a preliminary budget that comes to the Budget Committee and Council. Am I?
That's right. We have done two things. One, we did some mid-year adjustments because of the, you know, some shortage we have with revenue for this fiscal year and what our forecast shows for the next three or four revenue for this fiscal year and what our forecast shows for the next three or four years. So we did some mid-year adjustments, and I think that's what Mr. Steiner was talking about. The public forums we did primarily were to let the community know what the mid-year adjustments were, and then also to let them know about, after this cut, we're going to have to make mid-year, and next year, we still have about another six and a half million in cuts from the general fund to go over the following three years. Then we have also been, first we addressed the mid-year cuts, and then we've been putting together our budget recommendation, it's the city manager's budget recommendation for the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. And there, we're just finishing that, those recommendations, and putting our budget together. These changes, the ones for the security staff, will come to the Budget Committee on April 4th. I'll do the city manager's budget message at that time, and then we start that same evening with the budget review for each of the funds in the city. The general fund will be on April 11th, is when that will be presented. It goes to the Budget Committee, as you all know, it's mayor and councillor, and I'm the citizen members. They review the budget, give people, the audience, opportunities to comment on each fund, and then pass their recommendation on to the city council. Then the city council has another public hearing and needs to adopt the budget by the end of June. So it's a long process, and there are many, many, as you know, we're having to cut about $4 million between the mid-year reductions and what we need to reduce next year's budget by. So there are a lot of services in the city, as I've said before, I don't think we have any extra services or services that we haven't needed. But the fact is, we don't have enough revenue to support the services we've had, we have right now. And so we've got to make some cuts and some tough cuts. These are always difficult decisions, and we'll give our recommendations to the Budget Committee. I'm sure there will be a lot of discussion and careful thought about those and decisions as that budget, then it goes to the city council.
And the hearing is April 11th on this budget?
That's right, yes, that's right.
Good. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. I appreciate you, we all appreciate you coming down and providing this information to us. Thank you very much. And thank you also to the other security officers present this evening. Thank you. All right. I have no new business, I have no mayor's items or councillor's items, and we are adjourned to, we have an executive session. So councillors, please don't...